It's summer.
It's summer. Hi, everybody. It is, sorry, my fault, seven twenty-one. And we're calling the Westboro Public Library Board of Trustees July meeting to order. First on our agenda is public forum, see none. I'm going to jump into director's report and we're caught up on time.
There we go. Now go fast.
Bottle of efficiency.
Hi, Dr.
Okay, so for director's report, I just have a couple of items to go over with you guys. So first is, we do have a staff change. Last few times, I think we've had additions. And this time, we do have a resignation. So Cliff Rose has given his resignation effective August one. So he'll be here for another week and a half, and then he will be leaving us. And he's got a lot of adventures planned for after here. We've been hearing all about it, road trips and things like that. So we wish him well and appreciate the time that he was with us, making sure that our facility stays running. And yeah, so we will look at the future of that position and what it looks like. If you remember that position in the last budget season.
DPW.
Yeah, well, the last position was budgeted forty hours and they budgeted it down to twenty-five. So I think we have some work to do to really think about our needs in the future. Not our needs here in this building, because we need to be thinking kind of long term. What are, what are going to be our needs when we go back to our old building? And is there room here to advocate for funding being restored in the next budget season?
Do you think it, does it make sense for that to, for that position to report into us here you? Or would it make more sense for it to come out of the DPW?
I think there are pros and cons to both. I think we really have to look at all of the options in front of us and figure out what makes the most sense when we go back to the building. Knowing that hopefully, when we go back to the new building, we will have significantly less issues than we had in our old. I mean, really, the amount of work it took just to duct tape and hope that that place didn't fall apart. It's huge. I'm hopeful that we're going back to a facility where everything's been updated. And at least we get a few years of calm out of that. So I think the benefits to both, there's, there's negatives to both. So I'm not quite sure exactly what the right pathway is right now.
And, and he's leaving August first, and it will take us a while to hire someone. Would DPW give us somebody in the interim?
Yep. So I had a meeting today with Chris Pan and Jim Stewart from DPW facilities, with Jen from upstairs Recreation in Kirkland, to talk about kind of what our needs are here. What we have come up with in the interim is there is a, there will be a custodian assigned to this building for forty hours for upstairs and downstairs. Jen and I are going to work together to kind of figure out what a schedule might look like. So maybe they spend the first two hours down here, and then they go upstairs for two hours. And then they come back down here to check in, see what we need. I think their biggest concern between the two of us is that we're open sixty hours a week. They're open very similar amount of time, slightly less, but nights and weekend. And we, there's times we don't have custodial coverage. I think DPW is very concerned about that, those hours where we don't have coverage. Meanwhile, I think we're very used to that, having times where we don't have a custodian and we just have to figure it out. I also think we have different, we have different staffing models here in the library than they do in rec. So here at the library, we always have at least three staff on at service points. We always have a librarian in charge assigned, a town employee librarian in charge is always assigned here when we're open to the public. That's not the case in recreation. So there are different needs that we're going to have to look at, but we are, to address your question, yes. Yes, we will be sharing a full-time custodian with recreation while we're in this building. And kind of to be determined what we do with our open position. So.
That's going to give us some time then.
It gives us a little bit of time, because no matter what, it would take time to get that position built.
Well, twenty-five hours must not be easy to fill.
No, no.
And it's something that the town's going to have to figure out in the long run anyway, as both spaces won't be used. So they're going to have to figure out.
Yeah.
How to do that.
Yeah.
In their backseat anyway.
Yeah, and I think we're in kind of a weird transitional time, because we'll be here for a year, then we'll leave.
Yeah.
And Senior Center, if and when it's approved, will take, it'll be under construction.
Right.
Some time too. So while they budgeted one custodian for this building to support all of those needs, it will be a very long time before that's seen to fruition. So I think we have time within that timeframe to kind of figure out where we exist and what that looks like for us.
Something.
Yeah. So that's staff changes. ALA conference takeaway, so I was able to attend the American Library Association Conference. It was in Philadelphia at the end of June. There were a lot of positives that came out of that, a lot of networking that was wonderful. The keynote speakers were really wonderful. I got to see the woman of my dreams, Renee Brown, speak. And it was, it was so inspiring and reminded me that I need to read Dare to Lead, which I try to read every year. I need to reread it this year and, and really be thinking about the lessons within that as a leader. And I actually want to work with our leadership team on some of the concepts from that as well, because I think it's super helpful. I will say overall, I think the Public Library Association Conference is a better fit for our needs. This was the first time I've ever attended ALA. I think it's a great conference if you're into author signings and free advanced reader copy books. But I think if that's not your goal, it's probably not the right con. There may be a time when that does fit and make sense for us, but I would say our resources, kind of from my perspective, are better used to. I, I would much rather attend the Public Library Association Conference. I've been a few times. I get a lot out of the sessions that they hold. I get a lot out of the expo hall. For example, I went to look at furniture. There was only three furniture vendors there, and they didn't bring hardly anything. It's just not the focus of it, I think, because it's okay. But I got a lot out of it, a lot of network, a lot of great ideas. And it really made me think about as we turn the tide into being in temp space. And now I have this opportunity to really do the internal work that needs to be done. A lot of the concepts that I took from there and thinking about organization and organizational structure to really kind of look down onto our library and figure out how we want to exist kind of internally. So that was a positive that I got from that. That was that. Communico, I wanted to mention this to you guys. We have been on the hunt for the past few months, six months maybe, for a new platform, a hosted platform. A lot of you guys, most of you guys were here, I think, when we designed and built our website.
Yeah, so if you could give a little background on like what the frustrations are, because I don't think any of us were aware that there was any problems with that. So I think this is new information.
Okay, so from the outset, when you go to our website, it's pretty user-friendly. We've made sure that it's pared down. It looks attractive. That's all wonderful. The issues with our website come down to the staff usability side. When you get into the guts of it, because when it was built, it was built with so many plugins that now they are, WordPress has updated so many times that now these plugins aren't as compatible with the new versions of WordPress that exist. And so even to just get a banner to go across the top is like maybe thirteen steps just to get the banner to come up on the top. And teaching our staff to do that, it's.
Easily updating anything is.
And then with the old pages that were built, editing those, you can break the site. And, and the website, so the, the company that we hired to build it was, is also charging us, I believe around six thousand dollars a year.
Six thousand dollars a year to host and for support and.
Just for the website. And so it's something that doesn't quite work for us to fix it. We would need to start from scratch and build a new one. And I believe the cost last time was somewhere around.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars.
To build it.
Yeah.
Overcomplicated.
Yeah. We should be. But I'll go like.
Forward, are we ready to work this?
No, no. And so that's, that's kind of what I want to talk to you guys about. We have an opportunity here this year in temp space to put the work in to address this issue. And so part of our conversations with Caitlin, our technology librarian, is let's look at what's out there. We want something, a product that is hosted. We want a platform that is a, basically a third-party platform that we're building our site on, so that it's not, we build this on WordPress, we hand it to you and it's yours. We want something that is hosted so that the support is built in, so that any updates, the company is responsible for doing. And can we get, that exists beyond just a website? Can we get something that integrates all of the different softwares that we're using? Right now, we're using three or four different softwares. So we have a separate software, Asavit, that does our museum passes and our library calendar. Then we have a separate software that does our.
Schedules.
Yeah, our scheduling. We've got, yep, we've got a separate software that does our website. And none of these talk to each other. And then separate software to do our. Digital signage is a whole other thing, and none of them talk to each other. So every time you want something to show up on all of them, you're doing the work four times.
Is the information that it's sharing also difficult for the audience to, to access? Or is it all just internal that makes everybody want to shoot themselves?
So that's a great question. It's not difficult. You do have to go to each one of them and you have to link out specifically. However, I'll talk a little bit about why Communico does make it easier, because it's all integrated. So we looked at, I don't know, five or six different products. Every product that exists out there, all the known companies that do stuff like Biblio Commons. There are a whole bunch of different companies that do a similar thing, but not quite this. I'm familiar with Communico. When I was in Worcester, we were going through the process for, obviously, they charged Worcester way more than they charged us. When I was in Wilmington, we ended up switching to Communico. And so I've been through this process with this company. They're very easy to work with. They're great, great people. A great company to work for, awesome customer service, great support. Here's what Communico gives us, given that we have all of these issues, right? We've got issues with our website. We're also with Aspen, which. So our catalog is hosted by CW Mar. So our catalog, where you search your books, you're going off of our website to our catalog. We have an overlay called Aspen. We didn't have that when we got our website. Aspen is super powerful. Aspen does some really cool things in terms of searching for books, searching for items, searching for a whole bunch of stuff. So that's aside, that we have Aspen, we have this great product that is now kind of competing with a website that wasn't designed with Aspen in mind as well. So putting that out there, we know we have all of these issues in front of us. We also know we need to be doing better book lists. We also know we need to be doing better resource lists. We also know we need all of our librarians to be curating those for our public, because that's the core of what we do. And so the question becomes, do we get a product like a live guide? Do we get a product, you know, like whatever, and still cobble stuff together? Or do we just start from scratch and get something that does it all? And in talking to leadership, I think when we're looking at this product, Communico, what it does is all of the things we needed to do, and everything talks to each other. And that's great for us as users on this side of it, but it's also great for our patrons. So what does Communico do? It gives us a website. So it's a product called Create, and we can build our website on it. We did a demo of the actual website builder, and they have templates. It's super user-friendly. I think everyone on our staff will be able to use it and use it well. They have draft mode, which was, they did not have a draft mode before, and so I made sure that they had added it in. And they also have a schedule post. So if we know we're closing on a certain day, we can set it up now to have that banner show up when we want it. We don't have that ability now. So that's great. So website is something that it does really well. And if you're interested, we can send you a few examples of Communico websites, of places that have actually hosted. So that's great. The other thing it does is a library event calendar, which is super powerful. It's one of my favorite library event calendars out there. Asavit, a lot of people use the product Asavit. That's what we use. It's good bang for your buck. It's better than Eventkeeper, which is what we had before. But it does have some limitations. And one of the coolest thing that Communico's library calendar does is, well, my favorite thing that it does, it will allow you to set your parameters and create a printable brochure right there. So if I know I'm going to the Senior Center for a talk, and I want to print a brochure that only has adult programs for the next month, and print off six of those to bring with me, I can do it on demand, and they're attractive.
Wow.
And they look really nice. The other thing you can do is email that to someone. You have a patron walk up to you who says, I just want to know what kids' events are going on for the next month. And I can say, I can have my system send you an email every Monday with the kids' programs for the next month or the next week. However you want to set it up, it will email me directly. System does that. The third thing that it will do is it will allow you to subscribe to those emails. So like you can send a direct email, you can also subscribe to an email. So again, if you want to only know what teen events are going on every month, and you want an email to you the first Monday of every month, you can set it up in the system to do that. We can set it for you, or you can do it yourself. So for me, again, thinking about your issues, it's value-added, where you kind of get those very custom emails out to people so that they're aware of what you're doing.
And I can go in and say, tell me all the Thursday book club dates for the next six months.
Yep. And you can have it emailed to you. You can have a scheduled email to you. You can do it in a bunch of different ways. Or you can just have it printed out. And so for me, like, how do we get good information to people and not make it a ton of work for us? That's my favorite feature that it does. It also is just a really robust library calendar. And I can give you examples of libraries that use Communico for their library calendar, so you can see the difference. Because a lot of the library calendar products are very similar. They, it also does auto waitlist, so we don't have to manually move people off of a waitlist, which is like a huge thing for us.
Man, how do we do that? Oh, my gosh. Wow.
So, so there's a lot of stuff that will help us and save us time, and also allows to make sure that we're getting the most people out of each event that we're doing. So the library calendar is super great, really robust. The room booking module, also super robust.
And easier to do, because this is tricky than what we have now.
Easier to do, but also in the, we're, we're keeping an eye on the fact that when we move into the old building, we will have two study rooms. We have never had study rooms before. Study rooms, we do differently than meeting rooms. And we need a robust product in order to book those study rooms, because you want people to be able to book them best. So two of the things that Communico does, one is we can get key code blocks that talk to the system. So if you book one of our study rooms, it will email you a unique four-digit code. And that's how you get into the study room, which is great, because you can leave your stuff in there, go to the bathroom, and not worry that it's going to get filled in. And it also means that staff don't have to, unless you want them to, let people into their rooms left and right. It's all automated. They also, it comes with a product where we can put a screen out in front of those study rooms, where you can, it'll, it's red if it's booked, it's green if it's not booked, and you can book it right from the screen, which is actually super, super useful. So room booking module, super robust, really great, will be awesome for the study rooms. So it does that. It does digital signage, which is great, because again, we're reusing widgets throughout. You make one widget for the website, you can then send that to the digital screen and only have to do it once, only have to update it once. And then the biggest thing it gives us, which is an added value, which we don't have now, we have access to the CW Mar's app, which is a shared app with the network. This would give us our own unique, robust app for our users, where, yes, they would have a digital wallet, which is what most people use the CW Mars one for, digital wallet, but you can have a digital wallet for your card, but every member of your family can be on that as well separately. And it's really easy to do.
The digital wallet.
So like your card, just on your phone.
Okay.
So you don't have to have your card with you. That's probably the main, we have a lot of users that, I'm surprised by how many people utilize our app just for that.
The CW.
Yeah, so many people use that for their card. So it does that, but because all of these products talk to each other, the other thing that's really cool you can do, if you're logged into your account on the app, it shows you all the books that you have out, like that normal screen, but it also shows you all the events that you registered for. It also shows you all your room bookings, and you can cancel straight from there, which is not something we can do now. We have people calling, hey, I think I registered for whatever. I can't find it. How do I cancel it? And this, it would be right in the app, one login, and it's just your library card login. And also auto fills your information if you're logged in. So if you go to register for an event, it's going to auto fill all your information right from the app if you're logged in, which is like really good. How do we get people to come? You make it easy.
If, if I want to send soft copy to someone and they're on a legacy system somewhere, wherever it happens to be, do I have a choice of, of, of what the, the output product is going to be, is it going to be a PDF, a DOCX?
I'm not exactly sure what you're asking.
I'm asking if, if, if we have, if we have somebody somewhere that I would say we want to co-market something with the whoever, and they have a, an old, they have an older IT infrastructure that we have. And they may not be able to, to deal with whatever it is that we're used to using. We have a choice of, of the format of delivery, PDF, DOCX.
For the library calendar stuff?
For, for, for anything. I'm just trying to make it.
Yes, I believe so.
It's compatible. You don't have to be interoperable, interoperable, but if we could be compatible, that'd be really neat.
Yeah, I believe so. I believe when it sends it out, it sends it as PDFs. I'm fairly certain. But I can double check. But yeah, so the app is really cool and robust. One of my favorite things that the app will do, which our current one doesn't, is it has a barcode scanner. So if you're at Barnes and Noble, if you're at Tannen Books, wherever you're at, if you scan the ISBN code, it will search that item in our catalog, and you can put it on hold straight from there.
We know.
So can you imagine going to browse and be like, before you buy it, just see if we have it? And then put it on hold straight from your phone and come by and pick it up? Again, it's this idea of how do we make it easy for our patrons to access our collections? And to me, that's a huge value add.
That's a whole bunch of talk to be up to do.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah.
But that's great.
Right. Slowly too.
Yeah, and so.
I might not be able to do that thought.
The cost of this system, when you figure on how much we're spending on our website every year, how much we're spending on Asavit, how much we're spending on our digital signage, all of these different softwares, we're really looking at.
Couple thousand.
It's a couple thousand dollars difference in our operating budget. It's really not that much, and we're gaining an app, and we're gaining. I don't know if you guys remember, there is a product that everybody uses called Beanstack, and it's a reading challenge app. And so a lot of places will use it for summer reading.
We had it a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we were really successful with it. So Communico is launching this year, and you get it free with this package, their own version of this, but the benefit of this is it's straight from the app. So there's no separate login. There's no second account that you have to have. It's all just from your library account. And I think that's my biggest gripe with Beanstack is as a parent, I'm not downloading another app. I'm not logging into another account. I'm not going to do that. So if it's just the same one that we're using, that already has our library cards in it, we might be able to do some really fun challenges, whether they're book challenges, any type of challenges, scavenger hunts, we can set up using that software.
So people will have many fewer headaches.
I think so. Staff, for sure.
I was just going to say, in terms of, of the couple thousand, I would think the headaches, the staff and the time the staff is going to be saving.
Right.
Will make them more productive.
Right.
And everybody can be in charge of their own domain. Tracy can make an update to her book club without putting a request into Caitlin to.
Yeah, because it's one dashboard with everything on it. So we can train all staff on this dashboard utilizing all the softwares. We're also able to set up different accounts with different permissions. And so one of the really cool things it does is it allows us to have more library assistants, be more involved in this side of it. Like you learn this, and you're going to input all of the programs for whatever, and then Trace is going to go in and approve them. So we have that structured setup.
Like an approval.
Correct, yes.
Sure, right. So what are the cons? This is all sound.
Oh, the, no, but the cons is that it's just, it's slightly more money. Year one, there is an implementation fee. It's a five thousand dollar implementation fee on top of that. And then also because it's going to take quite a while to get everything set up before it's live, we will have to kind of double pay year one, because we still have to pay for our website and then have this going on the side. So year one, I anticipate that we would have to dip into state aid to kind of fund some of that. But beyond year one, I would hope our operating budget would cover it completely.
So this is, in case it gets into my head the right way, this is like if you go to a Shishilala hotel, you have your personal concierge.
Yes.
You just pipe in and they tell me.
Yeah, that's a great way to put it.
All right. So now I can understand it, because all those wonderful words you said, you know. Of course, I, I go to, you know, Shishilala hotels. So, yes, and I have my own concierge.
We have a sole, what is it called?
Sole source.
Sole source vendor. We're working with procurement for that, because year one, we will hit over that ten thousand dollar threshold. And so we're working with them to get that figured out. But there is no other product that does all of these things on the market.
Does, does the contracts with Communico involve any, any porting services or any, any help transferring from the old environment to the new one?
Yep. So the agreement that we'll sign with them will include full training for staff forever, A, which is great. It also, one of the things we're testing now is we're downloading the data from Asavit, which is our library calendar. And they're checking to see if they can take that and import it into Communico so that when we do switch over, we're not having to do all that work manually. The one thing we will have to do all the work on is our website, which is actually a good thing, because it gives us time to really think about what we want on there, how we want it to look, how we want it to feel. And I think it's work our staff are really excited about doing, to kind of look at, how do we want to set this up in a way that makes the most sense? So, so that is the work that we will have to do kind of manually.
And what is the timeline?
So I have a realistic timeline, and then I have a Kate timeline of what I'd like to do. My realistic timeline is I would like every single software live before we move back into the old building. So it might mean that the calendar launches first. It might mean that the room booking module launches or the app launches before. So it doesn't, we don't have to go live on everything together. I anticipate the website taking the longest. So I would say a realistic goal is maybe six to nine months, maybe twelve months, to be completely switched over and fully trained. Obviously, I would like to be as fast as possible, but I also want to be realistic about it.
And what will the public, public be experiencing while we're switching over? Anything different?
Hopefully, nothing. Hopefully, everything's all, and that's why kind of year one, you might have to double dip a little bit, because we still want our Asavit calendar live and functioning until we flip the switch and move over.
So where, where is the hosting site physically located?
I don't know where it's physically located. Communico is based out of the UK, but they have, their headquarters here are in Connecticut. So I don't know where it's hosted, but they host it. We also pay no ongoing fees for them to host it, other than our assessment that they give us. And.
What is that assessment?
It's ten thousand dollars a year with a five thousand dollar implementation fee year one.
I'm sorry, why is it called an assessment? Is it just the subscription fee?
Yeah.
Probably based on the size of the library and.
I've done a lot of these and just can't get that word.
So we currently pay six thousand a year, but with them.
Just for the website.
Additional for all the, like the calendar and all.
Yeah, we will have to keep Asavit for museum passes. It's one thing Communico does not do, but it is the one thing Asavit does very well. And it, it brings our cost for Asavit about, to about half what we pay now. So we save about a thousand dollars.
And will they be providing training, or is this?
They are providing training. Yep.
Awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, they're like, they're really, they're really good. And they're great, great people to work with. I've worked with them, again, in a number of libraries and, yeah.
Sounds like a fun program.
Yeah. I think it'll be a huge value added to staff and to patrons. So I think it's a win-win. Yeah, I think it'll be a huge value added to staff and to patrons. So I think it's a win-win for everybody. Um but we will let you know how we do with that process because that that I'm sure will be a process. Um and it's also a really great project to get staff here excited about and have full buy-in and feel like they can all be a part of it. So I think that's that's also something I'm looking forward to. Okay, sorry, this is taking a lot longer than that. Staff development, um. My goal, and I hope all of your goal, is to be more purposeful about staff development days. I would like to have a minimum of two full staff development days per calendar year. Um we did one last calendar year. We've not done one yet this calendar year, obviously because we were moving and. In the throes of just. Planning for vote and this project. Um and so we do feel like having moved into this building, we are very behind on training just because. Since we moved in here, every single process. Every single workflow has had to change because our physical space has changed and we're really feeling like we need to reset. Um a day that we can pause, get everybody together, go through all of our new workflows together. And so we do feel like we're overdue for one. Um and that means that I also don't wanna lose sight of. Kind of the one we are trying to do every year in December, like we did last year. So. We looked at the calendar and you guys tell us if we're off here. Um our ask is if we can have September twelfth and December twelfth, which are both Fridays. So we're only open eight hours versus an eleven hour day. Um to have full day staff development days. Here. Which is why you probably saw in here, I put an updated. Oh gosh, I have to make it so difficult, don't I? I put an updated. Oh my gosh, it's watching me struggle, everybody. I put an updated closed dates on here in case, in case we're good with that. But this also goes into kind of the next discussion on things and you don't have to talk about this yet. I just wanted to mention that those are the two dates. That we've identified that would be really, really good with staff development. So I wanted to throw that out to you guys for comments or concerns.
With staff development, are you going to be bringing in people to do a workshop? It's opposed to just, you know, a working circle of people here?
Yes, I think for the September one, no. I think the September one, we really just need it to be internal. But there are so many internal trainings that we haven't done yet. Um we have the de-escalation training we haven't done yet. That we've been trying to get everybody scheduled for and it's just been really difficult. Um we've got a lot of new procedure, a lot of new policy that. We really need to go over with staff. So I think for September, we, internal training fully. Um I think for December, we will always try to have somebody come in. Last year for December, we had Jason Homer from Wester Public Library come in. Do a training with staff and I feel like that went over really well. Um and it really helped in terms of staff morale as well. Um so, yes. But is the answer yes or no? Um okay.
Um well, since we're on that, then let's take a vote on that. And so I'll take a motion to close on the two Fridays proposed for staff development being Friday, September twelfth. And Friday, December. September twelfth and Friday, December. Janine, have that second in someone? Okay, any discussion on that? Any questions? Concerns? Okay, call in favor.
Thank you. Um and then I just wanted to mention that um Farmer's Market is back. We are attending every Farmer's Market as usual. And now that we have Karen Mattis here, who's part of her job is also to um. Kind of uh coordinate outreach. Uh I think you'll see kind of the outreach ramping up. Um we have a new like outreach forum. There's new processes for it. Um but just to mention that, we are. We are back at the Farmer's Market and we're really excited about it, especially for so close. Uh also, I didn't update that. So ignore what it says in the director's report for that. Just ignore that. We're at the Farmer's Market. That's what I wanna say. We're excited. Come visit us. So that is the whole director's report.
Any questions, applications? Awesome. Thank you so much. Next up, patron behavior policy.
Okay, so patron behavior policy, which previous iterations is called Code of Conduct. So this is the policy that we brought to you last month. Um for discussion and hopefully this month for vote. So I put the same version of it as last time because nobody, I didn't, nobody let me know if there were major changes that we needed to make. So.
But we still don't have like a comparison to the last policy.
Right. The bottom parts are barely the same. The bombing activities are not allowed. Um the biggest update is the guidelines for library use piece that's right on the top. Um so.
I think that's a really good addition. Yeah, I went in and looked and it's very similar except for that kickoff. It doesn't look like you've made any. I didn't do word for word, but it does look.
There's no major changes. The only thing I think that we definitely took out was there was a line about being able to film in the library.
Right, it was forbidden and that's.
Forbidden and that's right, that's the goal. So it can be discouraged.
I thought we got rid of that last.
Yeah, it was in the version that was in the drive, so.
I don't know that we, but yeah. It's not great.
Yes, even if it's youth. Okay, watch your stash.
I have bug masks.
I'm wanting advice.
So hopefully you all had a chance to look it over and. If there were not any changes, I think our hope would be about to approve.
Can you find, just do a quick search and find the word loud on this page? I think this is the page I saw.
Loud, L O U D?
L O U D.
There's loudly, talking loudly.
Alright, so the cash has changed, okay.
Creating a disturbance by making a noise, talking loudly or engaging in other disruptive behaviors.
Yeah.
Okey dokey. Thank you.
Got me sure that was in there? It's fair.
Do it.
Well, then I'll take a motion to, well, so this is a new policy. Because we didn't have a policy named patron behavior policy previous.
Unless it's a, the title of it is a change.
Well, so that's why I just wanna make sure that we're voting on a new policy and not, I just wanna make the motion correct.
Okay.
So it's a policy to replace the existing code.
Yes, so I will take a motion that says that, Kate.
It does still have the um.
Oh, does it? Okay.
Yep, at the end of the bullet list.
Yeah, I did make a note, and I did not, so let me just make sure. So we can make those changes as method, right?
So I'm gonna move that we replace the code of conduct. With the patron behavior policy.
That was thank you. I'll take a second on that, Janine. Any questions, comments, concerns? Then all in favor?
Do we have something that, what are the repercussions if they?
Yes, we do.
It's not a different policy, it's just part of it. Well, the next page.
Yeah, so I think it's on page the very last page. Yeah. Great. Alright.
Next up, community board policy discussion.
So this is the new policy. So this is actually a new policy. Um and this is one. For you to discuss and consider today. I sure can. So we don't currently have a community bulletin board policy. We 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 have previous procedures that we've used. Um but no official policy that we can find. And one of the things to keep in mind is we've gone from having basically two and a half community boards to one. In this building and when we go back to the old building, we will still only have one. And so. Uh this was kind of born out of frustration as we walked by our community board and saw like one. Place that was not even in Westboro had three eight and a half by elevens, just taking up space on the board. And the problem with that is it just, it. It makes it so that the things that are within Westboro, that are nonprofit, that are the things that we should be getting space to, get buried under all of that. Um and it's a, I don't know, somebody came up and had five flyers to hang up. We really had no policy in order to say no to that. Um and so we thought we really need to limit what we put on there so that. Our mission uh is shining through our policy. So we have um. We took a look at some other policies. We stole from a whole bunch of libraries and borrowed from a whole bunch of libraries. Um and kind of come up, came up with something that would work with us. So the biggest things here is. Really, what is our purpose, which is a community space for display and dissemination of materials. Um and. The community board can be used for the following types in this priority order, and this is new. So one is materials from our library, the friends in the town of Westboro. So that's number one. Um number two is flyers where shares announcements or schedules by nonprofit organization groups or agencies. Or by any federal, state, or local government agency pertaining to services provided by the government to community members. So that would be like, you know, we get a notice from the EPA that needs to go on there. It happens sometimes. Um three, postings of free forthcoming or continuing educational, social, civic, charitable, cultural, or recreation activities. Free kind of being the key word there. Um we really aren't a board in order to sell things to people or sell tickets. To two things, um again, unless it's number two, non nonprofit. Um and then number four is materials announced in community services and volunteer opportunities. So. The good thing about putting them in an order is that when we do run out of space, we then have an order that we can start taking stuff down.
But it doesn't say anything about location, like local events, does it?
Um so it does, so posting guidelines.
Oh, got it, okay.
Um kind of how it's gonna be that all items need to be handed to staff and that we put them up. Right now, the way it works is they hand it to us, we stamp it, and then they put it up. We're not doing that anymore. Um and then due to limited space, library reserves are restricted, size of number, location of display materials. Some might not be posted. Priorities in posting will be given to announcements by local and neighboring organizations. So really saying that we're prioritizing really the local stuff.
You know, but if say Southborough had a library event, they wanted to market it, we we and we had room.
We could put it up there. Yep, absolutely. Um and we don't, you know, assume responsibility for it, the fact that we're gonna recycle them once they're removed. They can only be out there for thirty days. And posting materials doesn't imply library endorsement or consent. We don't um accept responsibility for accuracy of students' needs, just putting that out there. So really just a real basic policy.
The other question I have is thirty days seems like a long time.
Most people don't give them to us for thirty days.
Right, yes and no. You know, if I'm planning like the Boy Scouts um pancake breakfast. Right, you want notice, like they put that out one month or two before, so that people have it on the calendar and that kind of stuff. But like. It seems like thirty days, it seems a lot, but.
For example, the Boy Scouts are having their pancake breakfast. They put up one for a month that says, coming soon in April, our pancake breakfast. And then. In March, they could put up a newer sign that says, you know, make sure you buy your tickets at. So they can have it up actually for more than thirty days if they just refresh.
For things like this that are, I'm guessing ubiquitous in the library community. Is there A L A guidance on this, what to do? And if there is, would it make sense for us? Just to take their, I mean, in the in the in the interest of efficiency, just take what they recommend and uh. Give it, give it, and you make a recommendation, then we just.
So A L A does have some guidance. I think A L A is such a big umbrella organization that they're not. Yeah, um M L A has some guidance, Massachusetts Library Association, but really. What they have is uh they have folders in which all of us as libraries will throw all of our policies in so that we have reference. Um for it, the things that they really give guidance on are the things that have legalities in there. So like in meeting room policy, there's a lot of guidance in terms of meeting room policy. What we can and can't uh allow or disallow in our rooms. So we pull on them for that. Massachusetts works so differently than the nation. Um and so it is something where sometimes A L A stuff is not gonna work here. Because we're not a county system, we're not, um we're really making these decisions on an individual town basis. So really, the best thing we can do. Is work together. Um Massachusetts Library Association is great. Um M L S Mass Library System is great as well. Um just in terms of putting together guides on how to write the best policy. So that is absolutely what we do when we put these together for you guys. The leadership team works together. If anyone's interested in the process, we have leadership team meetings every Monday at two o'clock. Anyone can stop by and see what we're, what we're working on that day. If you let me know ahead of time, we'll let you know what we're gonna be working on that particular Monday. But that's usually when we get together as leadership. Yeah, we get together as leadership and we work really hard on all of these, which it it's. It's one of the things where because they're the people who have to then enforce these policies, it's so important for them to be a part of the process in coming up with them and understanding them. Because when even something like this, bringing it to that leadership team, you get, you know, Caitlin, who brings up. Some good point because of the way she interacts with the public, uh and Jen coming up with something completely different. And so. Uh because they're in charge so much, it's so important to have a good part of this process.
My labor background is raising its ugly head. Um my concern with. And and I think it's great to be invited to attend a particular meeting, but I'm, I don't, I I would find it. What's the word? Suffocating. To have this layer of management regularly at working meetings. Uh but I think if we, so say one week, you're talking about something about books I don't wanna see. So I will say, you know, is it okay if I come? And you can let the staff know, we're gonna have a visitor today. I mean, I just feel like as a labor relations standpoint. We wanna be very careful about not. Imposing ourselves in intimacy. That's a good word.
Yeah, I I think you're right, Mary, and it can be. And I think there's gonna be times when it's appropriate and times when it's not. And so I think, yeah, if you just check with me ahead of time, if there's something that we're gonna be talking about really. Cuz we do also, as leadership team, we do talk about personnel things, which would not.
And I I I also, I mean, because there is that line between our role. And staff, and I I would hate to see us like. Step into things without being asked.
Correct. I think that that's a good point. So thank you for bringing it up.
I ask about about the policy. Um what? Items are, have you seen on the bulletin board now or in the library in the other location? That would have been taken down on this current policy. Cuz I wanna, I'm I'm wondering, are there things that would have been taken down that we go, oh, wait, no, we don't want that taken down?
That's a good question. So um for example, one of the things we saw was there was a. Flyer for a program, a ticketed event on a, that a mentalist was running. I think it's still up there. That would have been taken down.
What, why? Because it's a paid event, like. So it's not free?
And it's not for a nonprofit. Yeah, so like if whomever was having a spaghetti dinner for their nonprofit, but it's paid, that would still fall within that.
Okay.
So for example, if somebody wanted to put up a for-paid tutoring, I specialize in tutoring that. And it for ten dollars an hour versus. and for ten dollars an hour versus a program through the schools that says, you know, if your kid's having trouble with MAP, they can come to the Wednesday, three P M classes.
Yes. So like private tutoring that costs money would not fit within this, would not fit within the policy.
I do know that for, I don't know, maybe years, there was a knitting club sign up there. It was in the library, the meeting, they met at the library. That thing was up there forever.
I know, I like the oversight of things changing on it, looking at that. Part of my concern is when I look at the greater community, there is very few community bulletin boards as we have it right now. Anyone can post anything up there, things like music lessons or whatever. And I'm just wondering where that where that resource would be for people in town, like just, like, so like, if someone wants to put up like lost dog flyer, right? That would not fall in underneath this because it's not nonprofit, it's for personal. But you're not allowed to put them on trees, you're not allowed to put them on telephone poles, like there is, I know of one community bulletin board that's in Panera. I don't know of any other outside the library.
I think, I think there's one in the.
So I'm just curious, like, are we limiting it so much that people know?
Perhaps there could be a binder, which is not part of the, you know, it's a document in the library where you can post the dogs lost. There's a great knitting group. And in there, it's not for the library, it's just another important thing sitting on a table that somebody can go through. Where you're not advocating for it, because I always wondered why there wasn't more attention paid to the pedophiles. Because it's only a little strip and people usually put a lot of things around it, so you don't see it. And most of them live in a particular area on Main Street. And a lot of them kids, teenagers pass by those buildings and they don't realize that they should cross the street, just not to be close there. And it's just a little pinup. But if there was a book that was on where they were gonna check out, people could just look and say, okay, this is really important since so many kids congregate at where we are now, out on the green. So I just wondered if that fell under the library of government?
I wanna be careful about, so yes, there are things that we absolutely have to post. One of those things is that.
Okay.
What I will say is we, I don't, I don't wanna start it back, like I don't wanna start another thing that we have to keep up. I also, I think your point is valid. I think we really need to we need to go back to our mission, our vision, and our values. We cannot be everything for everyone. We really can't. We have to think about what is our goal as a library? Right? And there's gonna be stuff that doesn't fit within that, but doesn't exist in town. And I think we just have to be okay with that.
So that part, because that was the part I was most concerned about, because it doesn't fit any of the criteria of a nonprofit.
Government.
Okay, I wasn't sure. And I just wanted to make sure that wasn't gonna go away.
We also, we get stuff from all over the, we get stuff we just have to post.
We have the mostly, like, the government documents are all on a clipboard so that you can flip through and.
We try to do it that way.
There's also like for the lost dog, I mean, there's, there's all these online, you know, bulletin boards in, in essence.
You might ask the community center to put up a movie bulletin.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea.
I wondered if there should be, but I, I I answered it myself. I think there shouldn't be. There should be basically like, you know, additional materials can be posted at the discretion of staff, but I think that just opens a can of worms.
Yeah, we're, we have to cover where, when we move back to the library, we're a library that has very limited space. Very limited space. And so we need to offer what we can offer, but there will be a limit to what we can offer just based on that space. And community board is one of them. We're not gonna have space for two boards. We're certainly not gonna have space for three. We're gonna have one. And how do we get the most out of it? By looking back at our mission, vision, and values and being true to those things, right?
So there aren't things that you guys are remembering being on these boards that, because I honestly, I haven't spent time looking at them, that would have come down that you're thinking, oh no, that makes me feel sad that that would have come off of the board.
I was, I was honestly thinking about like teenagers who are looking for babysitting jobs. And, but again, it's it goes back to we have limited space, we have this board.
I first noticed that a couple of weeks ago, and I'm not even sure I saw it in the, in the, in the real building. And I remember my immediate impression, first, the first thing I saw was the pedophile. Well, stack, but the, no, it wasn't good.
No, I know, but I'm glad you saw it.
Was good was the, the fact that this was, there was something for almost everybody. And this really was, it could be a community gathering point.
Sure, yeah. And I think that that's, I think these values hold within our values as a library, the free and open to the public, all of these things that we hold true, the community piece, the nonprofit piece. I think allows us the freedom we need to be able to give space to those, to those organizations.
And to rotate it regularly is important because otherwise it becomes not a bulletin board, but a wallpaper.
Yes. Can you do it electronically on a T V screen?
We might be able to. I, I, I don't know that we're there as a community yet. Although I do think for things like the tutoring and for the babysitting, those, I do feel like most of those things people are going to Facebook groups for. Anyway, like I don't know that that.
But yeah, but there's, there, there is plenty of software out there that will do that. And you could, basically, you can either within a, a document in any form, a picture, and it will leave it up there for a while and then get rid of it after a certain time. So it doesn't require all up handheld.
No, I just wonder if someone's really gonna stand there and watch it rotate, or if they just kinda wanna look at what, because there's gonna be so many items on there. But it is something that we could look at for sure down the road, if it's something that we're interested in doing.
It seems like something like that would be something a community group might want to invest in and.
Sure. How often do we, because see the materials in the Westboro Public Library, how often do we post on it? Do we?
What, can you ask them, sorry?
Oh, the first one, materials from us, the Westboro Public Library. Like, because I know in the news space and planning the wall and all our brochures and things like that, like would we really need to be taking up space on that?
So it depends. Normally, no. But sometimes there are things where we're community partners on that we might wanna put up there. I think right now, the only thing we've put up there is, is red cards.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you'll need to post something, letting people know that they cannot post something themselves.
Yeah, we'll probably post the policy. And then also just a please hand to us words. Everybody's used to handing them to us to stamp. So I think that that's our opportunity to say, people, please, uh, you know. We're just trying to get it done now so that when we move back, it's, it's a non-issue.
So, and I have another question because I always ask this question and never remember the answer. The replacement of the policy that we just did for patron behavior, or whatever we call it, do we have to vote on that a second time?
No, because you had discussion last.
Okay, and so this one, we're discussing now.
Next month.
We need to review it twice, we need to vote once. That's okay.
This is so painful.
All right, that brings us to discussion of library service hours.
Okay, this is, buckle up, guys. So if you were in the drive at all, you'll notice that I have put kind of a formal proposal, which I don't know that we're used to seeing. But I thought for this particular one, it made sense to put in a formal proposal so that you would have time to kind of see, see the evidence and data that I'm, I'm trying to provide to you prior to the discussion. So kind of since the day that I started, I have been looking at our open service hours. And now that we're in time space, we're at a point where we have to start making some decisions. Specifically, I'm looking at our Sunday hours and our Saturday hours. So this is specific to weekend hours only. Our Sunday hours are generally September through May. And so thirty-five weeks is what we budget. We have four, four people that work those hours at thirty-five weeks. So it's seasonal work. For the most part, we have one staff member who is a regular staff member. In our last budget process, those, so those Sunday hours lived over here, they were their own thing. In the last budget process, they were moved in to be just regular hours within our library. All the library assistants are all together, which is great because again, we have a regular library assistant who does Sunday hours. We can offer Sunday hours to regular library assistants. It, it's great. One of the things that I present to you almost every month since before we moved is our busiest hours for the week. And if you recall, every single month, it's the same. Saturdays from twelve to one. And it is it's not just a small, I think I threw, like, I don't know how well you can see that this is a C W Mars graph they give us. So this just sort of shows our busy hours. So this purple line is Saturdays. Our purple line is Saturdays. And so you can see there's a huge rush to get in before we close. So for me, alarm bells go off as I'm seeing that busiest hour of our entire week by far, knowing that we're closing at our busiest hour. And so immediately, I'm trying to work with staff to figure out, how do we not close at one o'clock on Saturday? How do we make this happen? How do we expand our Saturday hours? For multiple reasons. So A is because clearly there's a need, a community need for Sunday, Saturday hours. In addition, on the weekends, we are skeleton crew. So we are open to the public. We are offering our facility to the public. But it's very rare that we're able to offer any sort of above and beyond any program, programming on Saturdays. Saturday afternoon programming in every other library we worked at has been very well-received. So if you think about, for example, a book club, I come, I always come from the view of an adult programmer because that's what I did. So as an adult programmer, if you do a seven P M program, you are isolated, a whole group of people who do not wanna be at at seven P M. If you do it at one P M, you're isolating a whole group of people who are at work all day. The only way that you can please both groups is on Saturdays, is on the weekend. And so Saturday afternoon book club, you have the opportunity to have retirees come. You have the opportunity to have working people come. You have the opportunity to have families come. Teens are so busy on Saturday morning, usually Saturday afternoon, you have a window of opportunity. There, because there's always sports going on in the morning, there's always things going on, I mean, weekends are weekends. And same thing. So for families, Saturday afternoons are really a, a great opportunity to come in and interact with the library. The other thing that I'll throw to you is our Saturday, the one Saturday we had a big program here, our kickoff, we had six hundred people in this building in four hours. We don't see six hundred people on an eleven-hour day, ever. And so, to me, it's proof that, you know, if you build it, they will come. So if we offer these, these programs on these Saturdays, I believe that we will get really good attendance. I think there's a lot of opportunity here. And so, again, my goal is to expand Saturday hours and have it being nine to five day, in the way that I know it used to be pre-COVID. The other thing to consider is we have six full-timers who work Saturdays. They work one and four. When they work a Saturday, they're coming in at eight A M and they're leaving at two P M. So they are working two hours while the library is closed. They have a lot of work to do. They're making great use of that time. However, it's from an institutional perspective, it's much better to have people working when the library's open. And then they have to make up those additional two hours by coming in early a half an hour or working late a half an hour, the other four days of the week that they're coming in. So one and four, when they're working a Saturday, five of their working days are impacted because of that scheduling. And so, from a scheduling perspective, it's a little bit of a nightmare to have just a half day on a Saturday and have so many staff working that. So there's that. From a patron perspective, there's a lot of confusion in terms of our Sunday scheduling, when do they start, when do they end? And it's much better to have a very consistent schedule. So in exploring, how do we gain expanded Saturday hours till five o'clock? We're really looking at Sundays. How do we take our Sunday hours and transpose them to Saturdays to make that work? Knowing that Sundays are also seasonal, but the Saturdays would be year-round. So if we do that, if we take our hours on Sunday and we move them to Saturday afternoons, not only do we gain all of that programming, because it's not a ghost crew the way it is on Sat, Sunday, but we gain service hours for the year. We did the math, I don't remember what the number was, but because it's year-round and not just thirty-five weeks, we get fifty-two weeks of Saturdays being open. It's not quite fifty, just were closed some of them, but expanded hours above and beyond. The reason that we bring it up now is, is multi-fold. One is we have an open position. So we had a staff member resign at the end of May. We've not filled that position yet. That's one of our Sunday hours. If we don't fill that, that is what we can use to expand it to year-round. So we can expand service hours without any additional budget cost under this plan. Another thing that it does in terms of staff morale is the Sunday staffers often feel very separated from main staff because they are kind of alone and on their island, and they're wonderful people and they're incredible workers. But if they were to work Saturdays, they would work with a rotating crew of library staff, library leadership, part-time benefited folks, and would be able to participate in more things like programming or displays because we will not just be skeleton crew, we will be fully staffed on Saturday. So for me, the benefits outweigh what we would give up in terms of Sunday staffing. And then down the road, there's always the opportunity to advocate for funding for Saturdays, whether it's through the budget process, or if we look at another model, for example, what Supery does, which is private donation to fund Sunday hours. It's something that we can always look at down the road. We can also look at this as something we're gonna try this year and reassess. Every decision that we make is temporary because we can always look at it and say, ooh, maybe we shouldn't have done that. And let's look at how we, how we get that back. But this is something we've been thinking about for quite some time and really running all sorts of numbers and all sorts of scenarios. And I think we get a net gain out of moving, closing on Sundays and expanding our Saturdays year-round.
Question, if staff members working in hours on Saturday, do they get a day off during the week?
They get Fridays off.
We get Fridays?
Yes.
So it's not like they're adding another day to their week, and part-time people are adding hours on one day instead of splitting it up?
So our part-time benefited folks and our full-time folks, they rotate. When they work Saturday, they get a day off during the week. Our part-time folks who work Saturdays, part of their regular work week.
So would they get increased hours to finish that day, or would they work?
What we would, in an ideal world, what we'd do is take our staffing that works Sundays and have them come in Saturday afternoons. And so it really would just be, they would gain hours because it would be year-round versus just seasonal. That would be the ideal and the easiest way to go about it, should they all be interested in doing that.
Do you have any, have you guys had any internal discussions about this? How, or what is the sense of how staff are feeling about?
So I would say, we had a, a big discussion with our leadership team about it. I don't know if you were there for that one, just, okay. With our leadership team and really the overall, I think one of our staff members said it perfectly on leadership, which is, well, I don't love the idea of working till five on Saturday. I think what we gain in this is huge, and I'm excited about the opportunity to do programming. So I think that that's kind of gonna be the overall feeling from staff in general. I've been having some discussions with some of the impacted staff to see what their take would be. Should our Sunday staff not wanna do that or not be interested in that? There's also the opportunity to offer additional hours to some of our part-time staff who would like to pick up hours. And we have some very interested staff members who, who are hungry for more hours and wanna work here more. And we have some very interested staff members who, who are hungry for more hours and want to work here more.
But in that case, what would happen to the Sunday people if they were interested in moving and closing, they would just?
They would have to make the right decision for them.
My sense is, having had six hundred people in here and a couple of hours on Saturday, that. This might. Be in an expeditious way, that way people are fudging their schedules, they work. On Saturdays, they take Fridays off, and there's no more trying to budge an hour here, an hour there to get their full wor- work week. But if it would allow on Saturday programming, I never thought, it never occurred to me, oh, we can't really do programming on Saturday. And again, you know, Saturday morning, it's all soccer games. So, um, I mean, I'm. I'm not against it, I guess.
Could I see that diagram, to see what the intake of people were on Sunday? I can't remember.
So Sunday is that light?
Yes.
So it's not, not busy?
No.
Right, so what happens to those people? Who maybe work on Saturday or have it as a holy day and work all week, and they look forward to having some. Connection with the community on Sunday.
So I think that's a great question, one of the things we need to look at is the fact that our Sunday hours are seasonal, so somehow, when we're not open, they're figuring it out. So it could be, we're open till eight P M Monday through Thursday, so if you work, there is always an option to come in at night. Um a- and do that, if you're someone who works Saturday, because certainly there are people who work Saturday. Including our staff. Uh but I think that this expands opportunity. Just in general, I think the fact that the hours are seasonal um versus what we would gain is a year round.
Right, I don't, I'm not sure it'll be as shocking to public on a negative, because we, it is seasonal, so there are times of the year where we already don't have. Library schools. With the added benefit of programming, I think is huge, I just think change is uncomfortable. And it, knowing that it can directly impact people, should definitely be something to weigh. Seriously.
I think also historically, the first two or three Sundays, it is dead. Nobody realizes that we're open, so. When you look at like what the net loss will be overall, I think people will be more excited to have a full dance up.
It would be really wonderful to have that additional programming and. Open it up too, because you know, when we do the talks, and we talk about all these evening events, and we're doing these in all these senior centers and. Living places, and they're just looking at me like, well, it's all that, you know, they'll be lovely, be able to say.
It's gotta be afternoon. Who's looking for the quiet place to come and work? And, and write and do things that don't have programming, that you can just be. In the library to do what your internal self says to do. That's gonna be lost on a Sunday, if there's, when you say there's not many people. But maybe they stopped coming because of covid, I mean, I, how many times did I come to the library just on a Sunday? And realize when it was always open, that it's not open because of covid, you know, and you're. Um so I'm just wanting not to have programming outdo the allure of a place to come. And explore, read, or write, or do some research, or become a, a student, learn English. Because you want to have so much programming on one day, that, you know, you're not gonna lose it, so is there some way that? Maybe those three people could just stay open for a few hours, like, you know, you have limited hours on Sunday. We don't have the funds for that, it's not much of a business.
Yep, so that's the thing is, remember, when you go back to the library, our programs happen in a completely different spot than our study spaces. Um and so as long as our doors are open, we have spots for studying and.
Alright, so you're talking about, okay, now I, I see it, okay, I'm still envisioning the old place in my head, so it's really hard to be. Anything new in this old head of mine, so. Um, okay, so that makes sense, then I would say that's one. Because there's, un- hopefully there will be someplace with a window, because I'm having.
I know.
I'm losing my edge on classroom, so we're in here, but, you know, that makes sense now.
And I also don't think that, you know, it's not necessarily there's gonna be a program every Sunday all afternoon. I mean, I think it just gives us that opportunity to use that time.
So that was, that was, I mean, my question was along the lines of since we're skeleton crew, this, on Saturdays now. This will add some more staffing on Saturdays. I'm just walking it through in my head, because we rotate through. Our full-time staff. I just want to make sure we have the right staffing to be, to be able to, even though just because we open doesn't mean, sorry, can still run, but will we be able to run?
So the new, the new model of staffing that, that Lynn and I use um here, and we started using in the, in the last phase is that. Our leadership staff uh generally is not used for desk coverage, what they do instead is what we call librarian in charge. And so we have four-hour shifts in which they do that, and when they are here on Saturday, that is their role, so they are not counted on as. Service desk staff, when they are here on Saturday, they are here to be librarian in charge and do programming.
Can you explain librarian in charge, that's a term we've heard a little bit, but I don't think it's really been explained as, as what that is and how you use it.
Yep, so our leadership staff are librarian in charge, and really what they're there to do is solve any problems that might come up. So they are, they have our radio, our walkie-talkie. And so if there is a patron interaction that needs to be escalated, staff call them and come over and help. If it's really busy and they need a third pair of hands, staff call librarian in charge to come help. If there's a, a staffing issue, if somebody needs a lunch, that is their job to come and help. Um and so really, they are there to be an extension of Lynn and I. Um and of management, administration, and leadership, so they are really there to handle any issues that come up if. The toilet gets clogged and we need to figure out what to do next, they are there to kind of uh to deal with that issue, or if there's a pipe burst. They are there to deal with that issues, because what would happen before is every college is built in.
Whether you were working or not.
But being in that, in that position as librarian in charge. Does that free them up to do a program?
Yes, yes.
So. So what if they're running a program, we say, not like, what if they're in the midst of running a program?
Staff know when the programs are, um usually you're only active in a program for an hour, sometimes the programs are outside performers. Sometimes they're doing it internally, really depends on what the program is, um and there's also stuff that we do like. This is, we already do this at night, um so you'll notice Tracy's here, she'll do a program on Thursday night, she's librarian in charge on Thursday night. You'll notice that we double up Wednesday night, we double up on Bernadette and Jen, so teen and childrens usually are in tandem. And we would in, kind of envision the similar thing on Saturdays, so that there could be a children's program in the morning. A teen program in at, in the afternoon, and they could switch off with that. And so it really depends on how involved the program is, it also doesn't have to be the supervisor in charge, librarian in charge doing the program. If there's a children's program, they're covering the desks so that that person can go do that program, um or vice versa, so. We've already had the conversation with them, and they're actually kind of excited about it, like having, having conversations with Caitlin, say we want technology programming on. Your Saturday, and really thinking about what does that look like, what does that mean? So I do think it, it's a value added there. And yeah, it doesn't mean that every single Saturday there's gonna be a program.
This will be quiet spaces and time, I know, I, 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 I read about this and I thought, oh, on those Sundays I'd study for my degree and that. You know, I'd go, this was actually before we moved to Massachusetts, and I'd go to the library and tuck myself into a corner to study. And then I realized, I really didn't do it that often. It was much more comfortable to curl up on the couch and send my son out to play.
Well, it might be an idea in the future to look at, you were talking about potential um private funding. For times, that might be those seasonal times of year, or end of school year where people are cramming for tests or things like that, that might be an option in the future.
I think that's a great id- idea. We should probably, at some point, not today, not tomorrow, but at some point talk, but you said it was Stowe or?
That's the closest one you think to us that has that, that model, but it's pretty common in the library world to do it that way, and you can get the talent to fund it. And you get proof of concept, um that way you also get, you know, um. More buy-in from the community on, on what it, what it means to have those hours. So yeah, and the reason that we bring it up now is because we would envision this starting um after Labor Day. And so we do want time to be able to work with staff and figure out how do we maintain the current staff that we have in those hours? And work with them and kind of figure out what impacts there might be.
Yeah, and I think. If we were to go forward with this, that I think should be priority number one, is, is really hopefully not impacting our staff as much as possible. People that really want to work here, making sure that if it's not on a Sunday, where can it be? Any other questions?
Do we have to take an action, or?
We definitely have to vote on change about service hours. Okay, I move to change this. Say, give me the statement again.
Would be to change our service hours. From.
Closed on Sunday and staff moving to Saturday.
I would say open from nine A M to five P M on Saturdays and closed on Saturdays.
I move that.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure what it was, to change it to hours to be open.
From nine A M to five P M on Saturdays and closed on these year round.
Prepared for somebody.
Starting when?
I believe September. It's the second week.
Second Saturday.
In September.
It's the Saturday after Labor Day.
All in favor? Any requests? Alright. Um so that brings us up to our standing agenda items. But we know our format for um. Evaluation, we are able to successfully add in staff input to be able to clarify and support. Our evaluations for those, or only those areas that we do not have, we have limited direct oversight on, so that was a great addition. We have our process laid out, everyone is working on their evaluations and should turn them in before Monday, if not sooner. And then we will present that in our August meeting. Sorry, okay, so that's done, we can take that off. And did we decide on a date? Of for that?
In our August trustee meeting.
Oh, August, yes.
Which is the twenty-seventh.
Is indeed.
Next year, I'm gonna change.
It's always a lot better. Anything in our suggestion box?
There's nothing in the suggestion.
Good job. Um, okay. Then the court of letters back up, I saw, and went out.
Yes, one did, I don't know if it's gonna continue because it's being put together by interim.
Yeah.
TBD.
Awesome. Alright, then. Trustee community out.
Yep, so Kate and I did a fun talk at the Highlands um last week on July fifteenth, we had a nice group of people, very engaged and interested showing up, we had a lot of fun. They want us to come back in October, and you wanted to talk, yeah. Yeah, and um we have one August fifth at the Wells, and Bob, I'm just saying, is gonna do that with us. And I just confirmed that, so we're good, and then I'm planning to go meet with the new senior center director and see what we wanna be able to work out.
That's exciting, actually. Wonderful, thank you so much. Library director, assistant director issues, anything else that came up that's, we didn't cover?
You know what we didn't cover is library building update? Not on here, so I will bring that up as a direct issue.
Go for it.
Um because I actually do have an issue that I want to throw in front of you, this is a, uh, it's a library building committee issue, but I want to be able to go to that. Committee meeting knowing. Where you are all at, um in terms of the building, so a fence is going up Friday. List to be up Fridays, we get a three-week look ahead. And it was on for Fridays, it's up today. Um I will say there are some trees coming down for at the end of the week and next week. Um where the transformer has to go. On the side, um so.
It is beautiful.
I know.
Can it be re- replanted?
No, it's huge and it's old, but it's the only place that the flowers can go.
The left side of the building?
It's hardening.
The most beautiful tree in the spring.
Yeah, for about two weeks, it's the most beautiful tree in the whole entire world. We will, right, we will, it'll be great, but um so demolition is happening in the building, it is a hard hat zone now. Yep, so they are doing active work, uh which is really, really exciting. Um one of the things, I'll see if I can put it up for you guys, but I'm gonna learn some crazy trouble to do it. One of the things that we have uncovered. And I say we, even though I, wasn't me. If you remember on, not yet. If you remember on the top floor, there is a skylight. Beautiful historic skylight, it's mostly ornamental, because there's glass over it, it's. Non-functional, um one of the things that we have discovered, and maybe you guys already knew this, but there is a second one. There is a, there is a second skylight. Okay, yeah, maybe this isn't gonna work, so I might be able to show you, but um in circulation. Above circulation, if I'm looking at the circulation desk, desk to the left, way up top, right when you walk in. So the one upstairs is a three panel, I believe this is a four or a five panel, so this is even bigger. It's in the exact same style, the exact same skylight. Um but just in a different place, so as they ripped the ceiling out, they found the skylight.
Oh, that's so funny, they put, they put down ceiling over a skylight.
Yes, they did, and so because the um old building, the attic goes on top of it. So it can't be functional as a skylight, it's never gonna go outside. The architects and the designers are kind of working on a proposal, but what they kind of said to me, and, and we should have it by. Uh building committee to look at and discuss. But kind of what they said was, do we do the same thing we're doing upstairs, which is just drop in, replace the glass? Um and backlight it. So that it.
Glows.
It glows, so they're, they're, they're thinking about backlighting it and then putting like the strip around it, so it kind of looks obsessed. Um because it will have to be, you know, the ceiling still has to come down, so they don't want it to look like a black hole. If they leave it exposed, so. So yeah, I mean, I can show you the picture here, because I can't yet go up there, but um, but it really is, is quite striking. Um I will say.
So it was basically just all encased, is what happened.
Yeah, so you can see it, so this is the exit, and this is the, so you can kind of see where you're at. But see, it's huge.
Oh my god.
Didn't the, you were here. When they did the renovation in the eighties, right, or were you, you were here.
Somebody, someone, there was like a glass?
There was a glass floor. There was a spiral staircase and a glass floor.
Over the glass.
So I think that was above, yeah, because that's above that, yeah.
So we went into the attic to see what was above it, and it's just insulation, it's all over it, um and so it's accessible. And it will probably be a change order, I don't know how much more money it will cost, but I feel like because it's just ornamental and it doesn't need to be actually functional. I do think it'll be minimal, there's some molding they have to fix over here, um but for the most part, I mean.
It's gonna be cool.
I want to get a sense from you guys, so when we go to L B C, I can say the board of trustees deals X, Y, and Z, or whatever. Okay.
I would like.
So you come sound to cost.
It's gonna come out of cost, but I think if, if we can look at backlighting it and a simple uplight, then it would be. It's gonna come down to cost, but I think if, if we can look at backlighting it and a simple uplight, it would be.
Yeah, and it will impact the design for that space. Right now the design has kind of dropped down, um, felt shapes and a. Like lighting that goes like this, but I think in talking to the designer, we can come up with something that will work in that space. Pretty easily, even if it's just removing a piece of that.
And the rest of the ceiling will remain at the height, or is it gonna go up high?
So the ceiling will probably be, see where you see this kind of.
Yeah.
That is probably where the new ceiling will go, so it's, it will be recessed, probably another foot. Um, but the, the one on the third floor is as well, there's just wood. Tramp that comes down and kind of makes it really ornamental and it will be backed like kind of around.
People will be thrilled.
Yeah, what a hidden gem.
Yeah, I can't wait to see what else shows up.
Part of it down and, and you can see that they kept some of the exterior of the old building and there's like an arch way up top. It's really cool, but there's no way to, there's a way to expose that. Um, yeah, but it, it is really cool to see the place ripped up and. Um, yeah, so that was something I kind of wanted to mention in terms of the construction project, that that will be coming up at library building committee, but to kind of give you guys a. A sense of, of what we're finding, um, in the old building. Yeah, it's, it's really neat to see it all come up. Yes, but Mary will be the first person I call when we do find one.
I have a long history, I cannot Italian. Different places.
I'm, so I think that's all I had in terms of building.
Awesome.
I was very excited to see that.
I just had one thing, um, if we could get our minutes to the town clerk.
Yeah.
They haven't been posted.
Okay.
Okay.
You know. I think I'm a couple months behind, but.
It's okay.
Okay, that brings us to treasurer's report.
So as you can see, we just started our fiscal year.
Maybe eventually. I'm gonna get this a different way next month, but we're getting there, our process is getting there.
Yeah.
Um, yes, new fiscal year.
Yeah, there were a whole bunch of books on Wildberry this week, so.
Yes, we have started our.
Yeah, we're, July is always a huge order, uh, because you really can't order in June. So, so July's always a big order and we're kind of um revamping the way that we're doing our, our collection purchasing and acquisitions process, so hopefully. It will make it a really smooth process this next year.
Okay, any questions?
Oh, it's good.
Alright.
That's hard, I mean, it's hard to.
I know, we're pretty much right on track.
Yeah, our C W R assessment already came in.
Alright, good. Um, I'll take a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll second.
All in favor? Fabulous. Uh, minutes?
I didn't find anything.
Yeah, I moved that we accept them. Awesome, I have a second on that. Janine, all in favor?
Who was that?
Uh, Mary and made it and Janine seconded it.
Okay, so.
Um, friends and foundation, yes.
Um. I just wanted to talk a little, two things that are kind of interesting. One is that when I was at the, working the book sale, because I'm still friend. And they came up with the idea, since all of the librarians have badges and I have mentioned that they have landers. Sandy, who, who requested for her birthday, a button-making kit. And she made all the friends with the logo that we had, you know, the lovely thing that was designed and under it was his friends. And she, when I said, oh, it's too bad that would work, uh, when we were at the golf tournament, nobody knew. And she said she would be so happy to make us the little buttons. And if you all decided on what the, you know, you're not gonna decide on the logo because it's the same. But it would just say trustee. And she said, you know, I'll do it for free. And I said, she said, cause you're always here. And I said, well, this is my gift back to the library. And she said, okay, so I just have to give her the okay. And because I always feel that no one knows who to come up to if you're at an event.
Yes.
And so, you know, I go around to say, hello, I'm Mary, I'm one of the trustees, you know? Because that's who I am. So we orchestrated this and, and if you all agree, I'll tell her to do it.
Sounds good, thank you.
And I went to a conference online, um, about grant writing and, um. With the National Institution of Libraries, um, and they were having one on raising money locally and through foundations and. So I went online and listened to the whole thing and I'm, as I think you know, a certified grant writer and nonprofit manager, so I was. Listening to see what in particular the foundation may be saying, to see if it is coinc, you know. Coincides with what I know and what, um, cause I was worried that maybe Connecticut is, if Massachusetts is so weird, that maybe Connecticut. Um, I'm from Connecticut, we did our things the wrong way, I don't know, but we didn't, it was all the same. So. If we could get some more information from the foundation, so we could look, because a lot of these things could be funded so simply. By getting, um, a grant.
Yeah.
And not a federal one, because those were a little dicey right now.
They're gone right now.
Yeah.
Just gone.
Yeah, so, but you know, like, can change in a flash. Um, so that we need to find local companies and corporations and. I have the name of the guy at, whoa, I shouldn't say this out loud, at Amazon, who gives the money to. Fire department and other spaces. And so, you know, you wanna use it in the right place and maneuver it for stuff you really need, but. And there are a lot of other people who are willing to do this kind of thing. And, and I don't know what they're doing. I don't know, do we have a foundation update?
So, yes, so, um, yep, uh, I had a, a conversation with, um, Maureen's foundation. Um, we have a meeting set up for next week. Um, she's got a laundry list of things that we need to work out. Um, some of them will be library building committee items, some of them are town items. Uh, so one of the things she's requested from the town is a naming policy, if one exists townwide, or if it lies within the discretion of. The building committee or the library trustees. Um.
Yep.
For example, yeah, if we wanna name a study room after someone and raise money that way, um.
Planted a tree.
Who, right, who has the discretion there.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and so really getting to the bottom of that. So that's work that she's doing right now. She'll probably reach out to you, she'll probably reach out to, um. Maureen.
Yep.
Um, in terms of the building committee and also she's already reached out to Christine and Kim to try to find that out from the town side. Um, and so there's that work going on, um. So just a couple of loose ends. So my anticipation, she couldn't be at this meeting tonight, though I did invite her. Um, is hopefully she'll be at our August meeting or at least be able to attend to give an update here. Um, or somebody from the foundation to give an update here, but know that work is ongoing and that we are, we are actively working on. On some of these items.
Awesome. Thank you. Look forward to it.
And hopefully I would get some next week.
Will you, um, send us out a summary of your meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
I'm just writing it down so I don't forget.
The friends had their first book sale last Saturday.
Yay.
Yay, and it went very smoothly, it was out on the sidewalk. Um. Probably for the next one, they'll need a few more volunteers to help at the end.
Okay.
Because.
Yes, well, this is another positive of being open.
Uh, full day Saturday.
There, so till three.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, they made sixteen hundred dollars, which was a really good sale. And we had Better World come in, pick up books on last Thursday. They used our, our freight. Our loading dock, it was great. And, um. Yeah, we wish we could take that with us back to the old building, but, um. They seem to be very happy with the, the situation they have in their book sale, their ongoing book sale as well.
And a gentleman came in, I, I was sorting in that little space and not having too many anxiety attacks. Came in with twenty-seven bags filled to the brim with books from his mother's. All hardcover, perfectly conditioned, that they were just amazing. Okay, go back outside because they were just, but the space is working out, but it's just.
Where is the book drop now for?
Opposite of where we are now.
Yeah, just, I was just grateful that we had a space where we could actually have.
Yes.
So worry.
Yeah.
This is really working out well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I actually like this little space.
Yeah, the stuff added up.
Nice for a, a more private meeting space.
Yeah, we use this for conversation circles and some clubs happen here.
That's great.
Yeah.
Alright, fabulous, thank you everybody. Um, agenda items for next month meeting. We will have a community board policy as well as direct library director evaluation. Um, yeah.
What is the date? Anything else?
I know. Alright, um, at a very late hour of nine oh two, I will take a motion to. All, uh, sec, can I have that second in?
Awesome.
adopted. All in favor? Excellent, thank you everybody.